September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the planning board. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, members of the planning board. The first item on the agenda is an extension of final approval for Gemini Landing Two in Fort Solanga. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number eleven eighty-one, map of Gemini Landing Two. The subdivision number eleven eighty-one, map of Gemini Landing Two, received conditional final approval for a two lot subdivision from the planning board on September second, two thousand and twenty. Conditional final approval expired on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The applicant submitted a request for a sixth extension on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The applicant requires additional time in order to file the subdivision in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. The planning department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension period of one hundred eighty days. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the planning board is considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number eleven eighty-one, map of Gemini Landing Two. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves a one hundred eighty day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number eleven eighty-one, map of Gemini Landing Two, to expire on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And we have the affidavit of posting.
Okay, I don't see Mr. Tramarko, so I think we can just proceed.
Yes.
The affidavit is good, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter? And if so, please come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Okay, then, are there any questions from the board?
No.
Hearing none in the matter of number eleven eighty-one, map of Gemini Landing Two. A move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the hearing is closed. In the matter of extension of conditional final approval, number eleven eighty-one, map of Gemini Landing Two, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, the motion is adopted.
The next item is an extension of conditional final approval for Meadow Glen Estates. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number eleven eighty-nine, map of Meadow Glen Estates. The subdivision number eleven eighty-nine, map of Meadow Glen Estates, received conditional final approval for a six lot subdivision from the planning board on March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Conditional final approval expires on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. The applicant has indicated they need additional time in order to submit the performance bond subdivision paperwork and file the map. The planning department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension period of one hundred eighty days. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the planning board is considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko for an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number eleven eighty-nine, map of Meadow Glen Estates, now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves a one hundred eighty day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision number eleven eighty-nine, map of Meadow Glen Estates, to expire on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you.
And we have the affidavit of posting.
We have the affidavit of posting. Okay, and is, I guess, this is also Mr. Tramarko?
Yes.
So, he's not here, again, we will proceed with the meeting and with the matter. And I'd like to know if there's anybody who would like to be heard on this matter at this time. Are there any questions from the board at this time? Okay, hearing none in the matter of number eleven eighty-nine, map of Meadow Glen Estates, a move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, the hearing is closed. In the matter of extension of conditional final approval, number eleven eighty-nine, map of Meadow Glen Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, the motion is adopted.
The next item is an extension of final approval for Coffee Estates. Is anybody here representing Coffee Estates? All right.
Can we proceed?
You need to have the affidavit of posting to have a hearing.
Okay, so we'll skip over that one then?
If you want to, for now, you can.
That's okay, we...
You're not doing Coffee Estates, are you?
What's that?
Coffee Estates. Are you doing that application?
Yes.
You are doing Coffee?
Yep.
Yes, I am.
Do you have the affidavit, any?
Um, I think we handed them in.
Yeah, for Gemini Landing and Meadow Glen Estates.
And Owl.
And Owl Hill.
This is for Coffee. Coffee Estates.
No, then I don't have the affidavit.
All right, we can push that one off to later and then maybe they show up. If not, you'll have to adjourn that hearing.
Okay.
So we'll move on to...
After, after this one.
Do we skip over it?
Well, just wait till the end of the, after Owl Hill Estates, we'll come back to it, see if they show up with the affidavit, that's all.
Okay, so well, next item is Owl Hill Estates in, Owl Hill Estates and Preserve in Fort Solanga. The applicant requests preliminary subdivision approval to subdivide a twenty-seven point six-two acre parcel into eighteen lots with single-family dwellings, a cul-de-sac, recharged basin, and eight point four-four acres of conservation areas. The preliminary subdivision number eleven ninety-one, map of Owl Hill Estates and Preserve, is comprised of two tax lots located in the R forty-three zoning district. The site is surrounded by R forty-three zoning and single-family dwellings. The site has approximately one thousand one hundred ten feet of road frontage on Sunken Meadow Road, approximately one hundred fifty-seven feet of road frontage on Fort Solanga Road, and fifty feet of road frontage on Yorktown Place. The topography of the site ranges from twenty feet to one hundred and ten feet above sea level. The property contains areas of environmentally sensitive land in the form of steep slopes and high groundwater. The subdivision does not propose development on areas containing high groundwater. The Board of Zoning Appeals granted a variance to alter environmentally sensitive land, slopes in excess of fifteen percent on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The applicant proposes to construct a cul-de-sac approximately seven hundred twenty-five feet in length off Sunken Meadow Road that will provide access to lots one through fifteen. The length of the cul-de-sac exceeds the maximum permitted length of five hundred feet pursuant to section two forty-eight, twenty-five G one of the subdivision regulations. The planning department has no objection to the increase in length considering the alternative is to connect the road to Yorktown Place, which would disturb more steep slopes and require removal of more vegetation. The proposed road also depicts less impervious surface than if the subdivision was not clustered. The radius of the right-of-way turnaround is sixty feet and the outside curb radius is fifty feet. This complies with section two forty-eight, twenty-five G two of the subdivision regulations. The stormwater runoff from the cul-de-sac will be directed into a proposed recharged basin approximately one point nine four acres in size. Approximately point eight seven acres of the recharged basin area will remain undisturbed and preserved due to a prior transfer of development rights. The applicant proposes to offer dedication of the road and recharged basin to the town. The existing historic dwelling, outbuildings, and landscaping will remain on lot sixteen and keep its existing driveway access to Sunken Meadow Road. Two of the lots are designated as affordable workforce housing pursuant to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. That's general municipal law, section six nine nine. The applicant has indicated lots seventeen and eighteen as affordable workforce housing and will have access to Fort Solanga Road via common driveway. New York State DOT has indicated a curb cut can be granted to the portion of the subject property that fronts Fort Solanga Road. They require a shared driveway, adequate turnaround area, and a highway work permit. Pursuant to section two forty-eight, thirty-one of the subdivision regulations, this subdivision is required to be clustered because it will impact the following natural resources and phenomena. One, slopes in excess of fifteen percent. Two, shallow depth of groundwater. Three, woodlands having a medium trunk diameter of more than twelve inches in an area of more than three acres. Four, land adjacent to a state highway. Five, historic resources listed in the historic sites inventory of the town of Smithtown. The applicant proposes a clustered subdivision by concentrating development to the western portion of the site using lot dimensions similar to the R twenty-one zoning district while preserving a substantial amount of land throughout the remainder of the site. The applicant is proposing two conservation areas totaling eight point four-four acres and will offer dedication to the town. The applicant is also proposing a fifty-foot wide conservation easement along the north property line of the subdivision to provide a natural buffer to residents to the north. It should be noted that lot sixteen is substantially larger than the other lots and depicts a lot area of approximately five point seven acres. Covenants and restrictions should be filed on the subdivision prohibiting any further subdivision, any future subdivision of lot sixteen. Lot sixteen should continue to follow R forty-three dimensional regulations. The planning board adopted a secret negative declaration for the subdivision application on December seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Attached is the secret negative declaration adopted by the planning board. The preliminary subdivision application was reviewed by the Town Departments of Highway, Traffic Safety, Engineering, and Environment and Waterways. The following comments are offered for the board's consideration. One, the highway department recommends the retaining walls be made of concrete retaining wall block. Two, the proposed intersection of Sunken Meadow Road at the proposed road will need to be signed with a controlling stop. Three, new dead-end signing will need to be added at the intersection and at the dead-end. Four, new street name signs will need to be added at the new intersection. Five, additional street lighting will need to be added along the proposed road. Six, the engineering department recommends conditions K and L listed below. Seven, the Department of Environment and Waterways recommends covenants and restrictions be filed on the property to ensure preservation and prohibit further development of the property beyond the proposed subdivision. Eight, the Department of Environment and Waterways has indicated the preliminary subdivision is consistent with the secret negative declaration previously adopted by the planning board on December seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and additional tree preservation as per their letter dated, that should say November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. The tree preservation will be confirmed and checked again at the time of final subdivision review and prior to any construction activity at the subject parcel. The revised tree preservation and land clearing plan dated June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three reflects the comments of the Conservation Board and the Department of Environment and Waterways letter dated November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Pursuant to section two thirty-nine N of New York State General Municipal Law, this application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because it was located within five hundred feet of a state highway. The Suffolk County Planning Commission considers this application to be a matter for local determination. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the planning board is considered the request of Owl Hill Estate and Preserve LLC for preliminary approval to subdivide a twenty-seven point six-two acre parcel into eighteen lots with single-family dwellings, a cul-de-sac, recharged basin, and conservation areas. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision number eleven ninety-one, map of Owl Hill Estates and Preserve, subject to the following conditions. A, the subdivision shall be clustered as depicted on the preliminary subdivision map dated June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. B, a fifty-foot wide conservation easement shall be placed on the north property line as depicted on the preliminary subdivision map dated June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. The area within the conservation easement shall remain natural and no structure shall be permitted within the conservation easement except defenses. C, the subdivision shall comply with section six nine nine of New York State General Municipal Law, Long Island Workforce Housing Act. D, covenants and restrictions in the form acceptable to the Environmental Protection Director and the town attorney shall be filed upon this subdivision so as to preclude any further subdivision, yield, or transfer of density to flow rights from any portion of the subject property. E, covenants and restrictions in a form acceptable to the Environmental Protection Director and Town Attorney shall be filed upon proposed lot sixteen so as to limit the maximum wastewater generation rate of the parcel to three hundred gallons per day, to limit the use of the parcel to one single-family residence, and to ensure the preservation and perpetuity of the historic dwelling, outbuildings, and landscaping. F, the applicant shall be directed to pursue all necessary steps to ensure that the historic dwelling, outbuildings, and landscaping on lot sixteen are listed in the state and national registers of historic places. G, all conservation areas as depicted on the preliminary subdivision map dated June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three shall be permanently preserved by dedication to the town of Smithtown. H, the gross floor area on lots one through fifteen, seventeen and eighteen shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the lot area. I, lot sixteen shall follow R forty-three dimensional regulations. J, the fire district shall be changed to Kings Park. K, prior to final plat approval, the design professional shall submit a design of the collection system that complies with section two forty-eight, thirty-nine A of the town code. L, prior to final plat approval, the design professional shall submit a cut and fill analysis for purposes of determining the required excavation fee per chapter one fifty-three, article one of the town code. Second, resolve that this preliminary approval shall be valid for a six-month period to expire on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Matt. Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant and I've submitted the affidavit of posting with a picture to Mr. Collado this afternoon. This particular subdivision has been a long time coming to this point. My client has worked long and hard with the planning department to work out a situation that was acceptable to the town as well as to my client. And it was really the town, and I want to thank the planning department for coming up with this cluster zone. And the cluster zoning does a couple of things. One, it maintains all of the dwelling houses to one side of the property except for two houses which would be on the, on Sunken Meadow Road. The cluster also, and the big thing is, gives a substantial amount of acreage to the town of Smithtown. It will be forever wild, forever vacant. I don't know if the town is going to put in any walking paths in that area, but once this map is finally approved, as you heard, the recommendations of, of the planning department, there can be no further subdivisions. So this rather large conservation area, you can see it up on the map there, is all going to be preserved forever. Additionally, there's what we call the mansion, and some of the people, maybe in the audience or on the board, knows of that particular home, and that's going to be maintained with approximately, I think, four acres so that you have a situation where you have homes on one side, you have the mansion with about four acres, and then you have the rest of the property preserved forever and including the mansion property. So we think it's the best of all worlds. Our engineer is here, Matt Sulzenberg, Andrew, excuse me, Andrew Sulzenberg. He can answer any questions you may have about the technicalities of, of all of the buffers because at the back of each lot, if you look at it, there are buffers. There's building envelopes and then there are buffers. So pretty much the whole subdivision is buffered from everywhere. And the biggest buffer, of course, is on the right side where you can see that large, large piece of property that basically is being given to the town forever. I guess we could have developed the property with one acre zoning. We could have knocked down the mansion. Maybe, maybe we could have gotten squeezed out one or two lots, maybe not. But this is something that not only the planning department recommends, but my client thinks it's the best solution for that area, preserving a lot of the natural foliage on this, probably the last piece in Fort Solanga. Not probably, it is the last piece in Fort Solanga to be developed. So it's being developed with a lot, with a lot of thought and a lot of love. I know Andrew, the engineer, has been speaking to the engineering department and making changes over the last months. Also, I just want to take a minute and have Rich Ralph, who's the managing member of... He probably doesn't want to speak, but I'm going to make him speak. He's the managing member of the applicant, and I'd just like him to tell the board what his experience is and what you've built lately.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Please state your name.
My name is Richard Ralph, R A U F F. And I am here tonight to answer any...
Please, we need your address for the record.
My address is twenty-four Stymis Avenue, Bethpage, New York.
Thank you.
One one seven one four. And, you know, I'm here tonight. Mr. Tramarko asked me to say a few things. And we, we've really put a lot of thought and effort into the development of this property. We wanted to try to preserve as much of the property as, as possible. And I think that the plan that we have before us kind of gives us the best of both worlds. A portion of the property can be developed. The mansion is going to be preserved. And a big portion of the property is going to be preserved into perpetuity. So I think that there's a very, very good balance that has been struck. And we look forward to moving forward on this and taking every precaution to be sensitive to the environment and build some homes for some folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know if the board has any questions for the engineers. There are some retaining walls that must be built, especially at the road entrance. So again, he's here if the board has any questions. If not, that'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if anyone here would like to be heard on this matter and perhaps some, some questions might be answered by the, your...
Step up to the mic.
Name and address, please.
John Rigrod, twenty-eight Sunken Meadow Road, Fort Solanga. It's R I G as in George, R O D as in David. And I've lived in that area most of my life. Excuse me. I'm not against development at all. And I understand, even though we all want trees around us, sometimes they have to give up for other things. What I'm not understanding is, are we getting ice in the winter? And by that, I mean that property, all twenty-seven acres of it, I don't think you could build on a third of it because of the slopes, the wetland, it's Sunken Meadow Road. There's a pond there, it's, you know, you can't build. So I'm not understanding, I've been following this since the Zoom meetings during COVID, and I've never quite understood. If we had no variances, no giving up of anything, I always ask the question, everything to get the answer, how many houses could someone build on that property if they owned the whole thing, chose to tear the mansion down or whatever? I don't think they could build three, four, or five houses on acre zoning. So to me, I've always found when people give things up, it's for a reason. They give a soccer field, they'll give money, whatever it is in the building industry. I appreciate that. But here, what I'm saying is, if you can't build on most of that property anyway, why are we in such a hurry to give so much back down to half acre zoning or whatever it might turn out to be if there's no benefit? Giving the town a pond that nobody can build on, giving the town steep slopes that nobody can build on, I don't see the advantage to the town or to the community unless they were to give us a soccer field down the road or something. I don't understand the benefit of, of it. The second thing is, we all know, every time it rains decently there, the Sunken Meadow Road area closest to twenty-five A becomes a pond in itself. People go by and your window gets splashed. Sand is delivered from way up Sunken Meadow Road, down the hill, and around. I can't imagine, the way that thing's built, how all of that rainwater, now on hard pavement, driveways and such, a street wouldn't wash out much more than has been done now. And if you check your highway records, they're always down there digging up sand. It floods the pond, no matter how many sewers you put in. When there's enough rain, it goes into the pond, all the stuff we're not supposed to put in the ponds anymore. So my biggest question is, number one, how many houses would they have the right to build based on property that they couldn't build? Number two, what are they going to do with it if they don't give it to the town? It doesn't, because I don't think we're winning from this. I don't think we're benefiting from it at all. I've made this point over the last couple of years, but somehow I've never gotten the point across, nor have I understood. If there were no benefits given, how many houses could they build? Because that many houses in that area clustered like that, delivering wastewater, delivering more people. And then another thing is, if the house were to burn down, this wonderful estate that I've never seen in many, many years because there's a gate across it, whose estate is it? Who gets to enjoy the history or the, or the whatever? And what if the guy wants to tear it down or if it burns down? Maybe he can't break up the five acres or whatever he's got there. But couldn't he tear it down and put up a McMansion or whatever different if, if the next person comes along? So is what are we getting in the way of guarantees other than land that nobody can build on anyway? A house that, in my theory, could burn down or be burned down or taken down? I just don't get the deal. And I'm willing to understand and learn, but at the moment, it just doesn't make sense to me. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Sir? You first? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anton Angelich, that's A N T O N, surname A N G E L I C H. I'm with the Fort Solanga Association, and we represent a lot of the same concerns that the previous speaker has brought up. A couple of questions are, will these new homes have the new septic systems that are required by the county? And how will that affect the, the water flow and, and all that sort of situation? Very, very much a concern. And are there convenants in place that will protect the mansion property from being further developed?
Well, I know one thing, that, that the mansion is going to be protected. That'll be, there'll be a covenant and they'll never, you know, in perpetuity, there'll never be anything else...
But the land can't be subdivided.
No, the land can't be subdivided.
That will be protected as well as the building itself.
Correct, no matter what, no matter what happens to that house, nobody can build on that land or, and do anything to that house.
And about the workforce houses, generally, you know, my understanding is not that deep about it, but workforce is for people that have lower income and need to have housing. And if there's that situation, is there any kind of public transportation that is going to provide for those people from twenty-five A to wherever they work?
That's something that perhaps Mr. Collado can...
Yeah, there's no requirement that public transportation is provided. The state has a law for Nassau and Suffolk County that any development with five or more units or lots has to designate ten percent of the number of units as affordable and they receive a bonus density. So it doesn't say that you have to provide public transportation, but this application has to comply with providing...
I mean, generally, it's good ethics if you're having lower-income people and don't have cars and things like that. How are they going to get to work and school and all that? They're looking at some of those type of things in East Northport right now.
Right.
So we have that concern for those people. But we're concerned about the whole environmental thing, the output of fifteen houses on smaller acreage and things as the previous... And things that the previous speaker spoke about. We share some of those same concerns.
Thank you, sir.
Well, there's a difference, right, between low income and workforce housing?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Before the next person speaks, I'll just reiterate. We are requiring that covenants and restrictions be filed on the lot that the mansion would be on to prohibit any... Actually, the entire subdivision, to prohibit any further subdivision. And we are limiting the lot with the mansion on it to just the single-family dwelling. And we are requiring them to, I think it was, what condition was it? I can read it, actually. It was F? Yeah, the applicant shall be directed to pursue all necessary steps to ensure that the historic dwelling, outbuildings, and landscaping on lots 16 are listed on the state and national registers of historic places.
And Mr. Colado, again, can you touch on the fact that it's not low income? It's workforce.
Yeah, so Long Island workforce housing, again, it's a state law. It's not a town law. They're required to sell the house at a certain price, and you have to be within a certain income to be eligible. It's based on the area median income for Nassau and Suffolk County.
Thank you. Okay, sir? And name and address for the record, please.
I'm Dr. John Impagliazzo. 2 Meadow Glen Road, Fort Solanga, New York. Fort Solanga is a very special place. People have moved there because of the total ambiance and quality of life and living. People are friendly. People work with each other. And the whole area, whether it's the Smithtown side or the Huntington side, is a beautiful place to live. And we pay good taxes to live there. This proposal, in my opinion, is useless for the town and for the county. If they wish to subdivide the land, they could have subdivided in one acre zone, which is the required amount. Why should we be giving this proposal any benefit other than that? It's only a way to try to minimize the quality of what we've tried to preserve for many, many years and decades. Fort Solanga is a great place. When we start subdividing like this, contrary to the rules, it diminishes the quality. And if the proposal was to put one acre zones, then that would be fine. That's their right. Why do we have to have 16 houses there? The only answer to that is greed. So I believe that this proposal should be withdrawn. It does nothing for Fort Solanga. It does nothing for the town of Smithtown or Suffolk County. The land that is being given, the eight acres or whatever that amount is, is not suitable for anything. In fact, it's the beginning of Suncometa, right there. That is the beginning of Suncometa that goes to the Suncometa Park. So it's useless land for building, but it's, you know, animals live there and all kinds of things. But I believe, again, that, and was already mentioned by the previous two speakers, that what the town and the county and the community is gaining from this subdivision is nonsense. It is not worth the effort. And it is time to stop a lot of the subdivisions and keep Suncometa the way it was and the way we hope it will be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in this matter?
Can I just get the answer to my question?
You have to go to the mic, please.
How many...
Thank you.
The question is, how many houses, if we didn't give anybody anything except what they rightfully could do, with all the wetland and all the hills, how many houses at one acre could they put in? I've never heard this over the couple of years I've asked. Because to me, that would be fair. But nobody knows, I guess, is it 18 houses that are coming in? What would the reality be if there was nothing given?
Would that be something...
Does anybody have that math or that answer?
About 24 houses? Is that...
Yeah, so you can see, I mean, I don't know if there's an exact number, but this property, along all the road frontage, you can see here shaded in gray, steep slopes. So the code doesn't permit you to alter steep slopes because they're environmentally sensitive. That's why they went to the Board of Zoning Appeals to ask for a variance to alter the steep slopes in order to get access to the flatter portions of the property. So what's, how many lots could they get as of right? I guess it's not many, considering along all the road frontage.
Well, see, that's exactly our point, I think, collectively here, is, why not build what you own? If you have swamp land or hills or whatever, you can't build on it the way it is. You'll make a lot of money no matter what you build, but why do we have to have a destroyed Fort Solanga with half-acre housing? Way to have water wash out worse than ever, right? I think one of the questions was even, what kind of cesspools are going to be the best kind? Because you have the pond there. It just doesn't make sense, as a civilian, to understand why they're getting that without giving us something wonderful in return. I can't visit that house, and if it burns down, that's too bad. There's nothing that I get that I don't have already in the sense of the pond and the non-buildable land we already have. Why are we giving away what we don't have to? It just doesn't make any sense to anybody that I've talked to. If I can be explained, if I can learn, if somebody can change my mind, it just doesn't make any sense. Why are we giving so much away when we don't have to? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tramaco?
Obviously, my client understands the concern of some of the people who spoke tonight. And hopefully, I could answer some of them. And I just spoke to our engineer. Basically, the yield is 16 lots if we were to go there and do one acre lots and spread it all out over the subdivision. So the cluster really doesn't benefit us in the sense that we're getting more lots. What it does do is, what I said before, is give a substantial amount of land to the town. Land is not useless. It can be developed. We already got approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And as far as I can remember, nobody came in and objected. And even if they did, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved the application. One of the other questions was, what about sanitary flow and sewers? Well, I don't mean sewers, I mean septic systems. My client's required to put in the new septic systems. They're very, very environmentally safe. The cost of them is about double of what the ordinary cesspools cost, which you can't do anyway anymore. So they have to put in the new systems. There was a question about drainage, and where is all that water going to go? Well, that's part of the whole time spent with this application and our engineering to sit with the engineering department to make sure that we contain all the water on the premises. It's a law in the town of Smithtown. You can't let property, water from one property go on another property. And especially in a new development where there's a tremendous amount of control. Engineering has gone over this a multitude of times, made substantial changes. And we finally came to an agreement as to what was best with the type of drainage that will be required. Finally, there was a question about affordable housing. And I think Mr. Colado indicated that the affordable housing is based upon the median income in Smithtown. And believe it or not, it's between $130,000 and $150,000. So although we are required to build a moderately priced house, the people... By the way, it's all in a lottery. You just don't go there and somebody that knows somebody can get the affordable house. In this case, I think it's one of the services that'll conduct the lottery. And the winners of those lotteries have to conform to all the requirements. Also, there's a covenant on those lots that say they can't buy those lots, those houses, and then sell them for a big price. There's a covenant that states, no, you got to stay within a certain parameter. So all of those things were... Well, the affordable housing is a law. We have to comply with it, and we have. I think the new septic systems are really great in the sense that the Department of Environmental Conservation and the Health Department support it and don't allow anything else. Again, we'll maintain our water on the property. There are buffers and setbacks around all of the lots. It's not going to change the character of Fort Solanga. It fits in with the character of Fort Solanga. And that's why we spend so much time with the planning department to work out all the intricacies to make this a project that will stand out. So we asked the board for its favorable consideration and adopt the recommendation of the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you. You may come up to the mic and state your name and address again, please, sir.
I don't mean to get into a debate, but I can't accept those numbers. In order to have 16 houses, you'd have to have a highway, a road. Look what your building has to do with there. You don't have... You think of a house with a driveway. With all that steep slope and all that wetland, you couldn't put five driveways in, maybe three. He'd have to build a road. I think your information is totally incorrect, sir, and I would love...
Do you mind, sir?
I think the information granted, and I've been asking for three years, how many houses can you really build in there? I think 16 is a bunch of baloney. How can you put... You can't put 18 on half acre with a road. How are you going to put 16 in? Where's the trade? I think the trade is like three versus 18. So who makes that decision? Who comes up with the true information? I think maybe you could put 40 houses in there. Maybe you could double-deck.
Sir, can you please address the board?
All right, I'm just, I don't mind honest information, but anybody who lives in that area who drives by it, you have acres and acres of pond, acres and acres of wetland, and nowhere to put driveways. How are you going to put 16? How can you use that as an argument when it's impossible? I think it's false information, and I think it's not kind to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know where this gentleman finds any wetlands on the property.
I've talked to the engineer, and there doesn't seem to be any ponds or swamps or wetlands. There are wetlands off of the property, not on our client's property. And again, I said, and if you want Andrew to come up and testify, he will. He figured out, what was it, 16 houses as of right? So we're not trying to fool anybody. And we certainly couldn't fool the planning department, the town engineer, the town highway department, and the Department of Environmental Conservation. If we could fool all those people, we'd be pretty good. But it doesn't happen. So thank you.
Sir?
There's fairly new...
Can you name and address for the record again, please, sir?
Sure. Anton Angelich. Do you need the spelling again? No, okay. There's fairly new state regulations about indigenous burial grounds protection in New York State. This area has been very active in years past with Matinacock Indians. We've had some meetings with those people fairly recently. Has any archaeological things been done on this particular site to protect those possible burial grounds?
That, I don't even know. I don't think... We haven't that...
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if it's required or not. I don't know if it's an area that's been flagged for, you know, archaeological.
I've had some meetings with tribal media, not specific for this property. This was a Matinacock area. Bread and Cheese Hollow Road used to be a flow area from Comac going down to Fresh Pond. There's all sorts of, you know, things in that area. When they were doing the Indian Hills development in Huntington aside, they had Chief Henry Wallace come in, and there were some things that were found in certain locations there. So it's not too far away. And, you know, anywhere there's fresh water, there were eels, shellfish. Those are areas that, you know, the native people lived for thousands of years. And you think that there was water here and ponds and things like that, there's a possibility that this could be protected by, you know, what was passed by Governor Hochul last year.
Are there any wetlands on this property? No, it's...
Nearby, nearby. I mean, you know, they're not going to build housing, you know, wigwams and things in the swamp, but it would be near where there was water. And you're not that far from Suncometa and all those water streams and things.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate that. Yes, sir?
I mean no harm to the builder, not at all.
Same thing, name and address.
John Rigrod, 28 Suncometa Road, Northport, well, Fort Solanga. I mean no harm. I just, it's difficult to swallow. Nobody's trying to fool anybody. But if it takes all that to get 18 houses in, could we ask for some kind of a delay so that we could see how that land could be developed in the, quote, "normal" way, without variances, without gifts? And if there's not wetland, what's the pond? Is it not connected to that property? I don't know. I do know that next time it rains, if you drive there, you'll drive through a road of water so high it washes over the high curb and through two sewers into the pond. And that's with no hard, you know, landscape. How do you trap that amount of water on that hill when it literally is washing down for as long as I've been there? Many, many, many years. So I'm asking perhaps for a delay or a postponement, some more research, number one, please, when it's heavy rain, or ask the highway department just how bad it is that it keeps flooding that poor pond with all the stuff that comes down. And number two, how could you mathematically put that many houses? I think it's a false number. It just doesn't make sense. If they have to do that much, great. You're saving a four- or five-acre plot for a house that nobody will visit except the owner, who I suppose has the right to tear it down, I don't know. But I'm saying, how can you possibly get 16 houses in there? There's no way to put driveways in. You'd have to build a road. Once you build a road, you've done the same thing. It just doesn't make sense. I think it got biased. Not, nobody's trying to trick anybody. I don't mean that at all. It just doesn't seem to make physical sense. And I'm begging of this group, because I've been asking for that information for a few years now. How has the math come to be? It just doesn't make sense. And whatever's fair is fair. Whatever they do, they'll make a living at it. But I just can't comprehend how 16 houses as of right could go in there. And therefore, what are we getting for what we're giving? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Carl Jacob, K-A-R-L-J-A-C-O-B. I live at 61 Suncometa Road, Fort Solanga. If you look at that map, I'm probably just left of the seal where it is. And someone on the board had mentioned that it's in the town code that you can't run your runoff water onto someone else's property. Right now, going through the back of that, the town is doing that. If you look at Suncometa Road, two houses from me by number 57, which is just west of Bernard Street, there's two sewer grates. Those two sewer grates run to an underground pipe that runs between 57 and 59. That pipe then... That pipe then goes and runs all the water between the backs of Sunken Meadow and Hastings down to that pond. And if anybody wants to, they can come to my house, and I'll show them where it happens. So to say that no one, I mean, the town's doing it, so I don't know why someone else wouldn't be doing it. So I have to say.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any more questions? Does the board have any questions?
Yeah. What was the reasoning behind changing the variance from one-acre plots to the smaller plots? Like, what was the initial request? What was the thought behind that?
To cluster the subdivision. So normally, you reduce the size of the lots and concentrate it on one part of the property to preserve other parts of the property.
Right, okay. But as, I forget your name, sir, that gentleman said, if you couldn't build on the area that they've left, okay, then saying, well, we're not going to build on that, we'll cluster them all, as he said, doesn't really make sense because, well, you couldn't build there anyway. You could only build on the part you're building on now, but instead of four houses or so, you're now putting 18 in. So just asking, what was the impetus behind saying, well, let's do 18 instead of four, or five, six, whatever it is that could fit on the buildable land within that property?
Right, that's why they applied to the Board of Zoning Appeals. There was the number as of right, like I said, I don't know what the exact number is, but the slopes reduced the number of lots you could build as of right. That's why they went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You had the hearings, the board made the decision to approve it, so they basically set that number of lots.
Right. No, I'm just asking, what was the rationale and the, you know, so, you know, I go back and look at BZA-
Right, you'd have to-
But, yeah, that's-
That was a decision made by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, right.
Now we're dealing with what's before us. But that decision was made, which increased the yield, as Mr. Chamaco stated.
Right, right. No, just asking, you know, what, how did it come about, and what was the logic used? So you've answered that for me.
But the gentleman said earlier, if it were day one, it would be much less than it is now after the Board of Zoning Appeal granted the bans.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the board?
On the septic, therefore, every house has, there'll be one septic tank per house?
Yes, they'll be subject to Suffolk County Health Department regulations, so.
Right, right.
One per house.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just want to think on the highway department. Like I said, their only input was the retaining walls along the roadway?
Right. Usually, engineering gets more involved when it comes to roadway and drainage and regressing. Highway takes responsibility of it if it's dedicated to the town, the road, and the recharge basin.
Okay.
But they do comment on roads sometimes, but usually, the engineer is the one that's responsible for design.
And a recharge basin is based off of the size of this development, right?
Well, it's probably based on the amount of surface area and how much rainwater is being captured. It's all math.
I got you. Thank you.
Okay, then, we'll proceed to close the hearing. In the matter of number 1191, map of Owl Hill Estates and Preserve, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is closed. In the matter of subdivision preliminary approval, number 1191, map of Owl Hill Estates and Preserve, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted. And, well, so, Mr. Chamaco-
He never came, so that one should be adjourned.
Yeah. So no one came, so we're going to adjourn.
Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn it. So when's our next meeting?
Is there no call?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I can't give you a good answer.
All right, so when's our next meeting?
October 18th.
So we'll adjourn until October 18th?
Okay. Make a motion.
I make a motion that we table it to October 18th. 18th.
Okay. Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is adjourned. Okay, then, I will now move that we adopt the minutes of the August 16, 2023 meeting of the planning board.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? The motion is adopted, and I move to adjourn this meeting.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.